Back everybody on YouTube and those in the audience, we're at our next agenda item. This is not an action item, this is a discussion with our planning and zoning and road department about the Good Lane property. And I ascended to kind of research this for us here a while back because there's a lot of unknowns about what we can and can't do on that property the county owns. And so I wanted a clear, kind of a cleared up definition of that. I know in the past it was two different owners. I think that we bought the property from them. Each owner has different restrictions. And I want this so you guys can kind of learn what we can and can't do out there.
Yeah, I appreciate it because I was really confused in trying to read that.
So, my disclaimer, I'm not legal counsel and I am not a surveyor. So, this is what I discovered and it's just in layman's terms. On the large parcel and this large parcel...
Cindy, is there any way you can put that map up on the...
Sure.
Would that take you a second? Because I think it's important for everybody to understand this. And Jeff, do you want to come up too, be a part of this?
For some reason, I feel like we need to print these and actually write on them because they do have different deed restrictions based upon...
You do.
You do.
Oh yeah, it was, it was like, oh my goodness.
I was researching, that's a number of years ago. It's like, why did we care? They don't want competition.
Oh yeah, I get that. And we have plenty of time Cindy, we got till noon, so we're not in a big rush. That look like your old Dodge sitting there.
Yeah, I wasn't around then, but...
So, this is Highway 55 going north and then you take right on Good Lane. This is Coskella. This is the big pit you see most of. And then Good Lane...
That's the state's, correct?
State and Olson's.
This is Olson's right here. Okay, aggregate. And this one's the state.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, here's the state. Good Lane continues up the hill to, we'll just call it the Ferris House. Charlie Gibson has it now, doesn't he?
Yep.
That's Valley County.
It's Ferris' old house.
There's Charlie's house, right here. So, the first piece I'm going to talk about is this one right here.
The big one?
That's the big one.
That's the big one.
That's the big one.
So that's on the backside of the ridge of the...
No, no, it's on this side of the ridge, but right where O.K. Gravel Works and the state pit is right now, we go behind both of those pits.
So Cindy, the property to the, I'm going to say the left of this between, that's our property?
This is ours.
That's ours too?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that I was just on, this one is not ours.
That's DS.
That's Gold Fork, that's Bloxum. This is the, and you see that we're almost getting up into this piece here with the county pit. It's continued to be accessed from this road here. So, what I read about this one was the restrictive covenant on it is that Valley County will not extract quarry material from a parcel on the north section. For the northern part of this, up against Aldapis, you can't extract, and it's on this, it was attached to the, it looks like that. So, it's mostly this triangle here, up in here.
But we can on the southern half?
But you can on the southern part.
Yeah.
Over down in here.
Do we have access in there Jeff?
We will have. The pit's slowly working its way that way.
Yeah, see, you're working your way north.
That's supposed to be a hundred year pit. And plus, we get to go down long ways.
So Cindy, that, it's actually defined that the boundaries of where we can actually, okay.
Yes, it's Exhibit C.
So 250 foot down, from what I'm seeing. No, 2,500 feet down.
Really, it's probably 260 feet.
How many acres is that?
That piece there, that's at 80?
Just 75, Jeff. So it's 75...
75 acres?
Yeah, because I thought it was 80 acres too, so is, so the whole thing is 75.681.
Okay. It's basically that tree line is where, I'm just drawing that line.
What the heck up there?
What'd you do?
No idea.
So that whole thing is non-minable?
About 25 acres.
Is that what you're seeing? Okay.
Yep, that's, that's what it looks like on this map. Of course, you might want to go out and stake it at some point.
So we can't mine it for materials, it doesn't mean we can't use it for other stuff though, correct?
Will not extract quarry materials from a parcel on the north section of this piece of property. This restrictive covenant is in effect for 99 years. June 1st of 2000, I mean, 200, 202100?
Is there loggable timber on that place?
You gotta get to it. Right now, it's up on the top of a pretty steep hill.
My question is, okay, we can't mine material out of it, but can we put up an asphalt batch plant on it?
Well, that's down in your pit, your other pit.
I understand that.
It just says will not extract quarry material.
It can be logged and that's... Not yet.
Well, you could do all kinds of things probably, but...
You could put housing on it.
That angled line that she has drawn there.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of the top of a ridge. The north side of that ridge down towards Aldapis is the timbered side. And that was probably wrote in place, I don't even know why we bought it really, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Well, because it was part of...
Oh, it was part of that parcel.
I like what parcel, yeah. Because it's all...
I don't see us even getting close to that line.
It'll be 100 years.
I was going to say 100 years because we can still go down about 200 feet from where we're at, down to the level of the chicken house or the, I call it chicken house, not there anymore.
Hey, why you got that picture up? How hard is it? I just want to make sure I know what I'm talking about here. Can you put the roads back up?
Move it up a little bit.
So you have access through here to this pit?
Yep.
Where does this road go? Is there another...
That's not a road.
And this is an arch here, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
So we could change this access to this whole area if we wanted. I'm just asking, I'm not saying I want to do it.
This is not yours. This piece right here is not yours.
That's Suebert's.
Which piece?
That one.
Okay, okay.
That's where the cell tower is and...
A pretty steep road though Jeff, isn't it?
Oh yeah, once, once you get past the, the cell tower right there with the little blue dot is, it's pretty steep.
Is this a good road here Jeff?
Oh yeah. Yeah, it's all red.
Holds up your trucks and all that?
Oh yeah. It's on solid rock. It's steep, but other than that, that's, I don't, never seen needing another access in there. If nothing else, as we bring the pit down, it'll lessen the grade.
So basically, you'd just be accessing that piece of property eventually from the south side?
It'll probably almost always be from the south side.
Now, are you crushing any of that material or is this not rock?
I've had premier in there for the last two years.
So this is where you're getting your basalt chips?
That's our only basalt pit.
So those other two parcels, up there, we own one of them, somebody else owns the other one?
Correct.
As far as the pits, up there on the left side?
Left side, the north one is Idaho Transportation Department and the one with the blue dot on it is O.K. Gravel Works. That's O.K. Gravel Works right there.
They have a lot of gravel left, right Jeff? I mean, they're not getting close to even the east side.
Um, they're, they can still go down. And word was, I mean, I talked to Wade a few years back, they, they want to actually move Coskella Road. That's really good rock right there and kind of lower that whole thing to get the rock out of it. Wade's leasing it right now to Knife River.
So, is Knife River planning on putting a batch plant in there?
They can't. Against their rules.
Who's there?
Um, they tried to do it a few years back. Granite was going to put one in there and the public outcry was...
That was right here. That was on this piece.
On the other side of the road?
Oh, that was on the lower piece. Oh. Yeah, I, I don't know.
They didn't have to apply for a conditional use permit.
But the state has put a batch plant in on theirs, haven't they? When they redid the highway?
State did, yes. Their grandfather did.
They can do whatever they want.
And I think our pit was, I thought we were okay to put a hot, hot plant in ours at one time?
You are.
Yeah, okay.
But it's not?
For the county, the county can...
For only county use, not for private?
Right.
The state, they're supposed to follow our rules and ordinances unless it was grandfathered in, except for things that are essential to the statewide highway transportation system. And so they've always claimed that gravel is essential and they don't want to go through our process. But I did send them a letter a number of years ago because they bought that piece and told them that if they ever moved into that piece, they will need a conditional use permit. And I have heard nothing back and they've kind of gone around it.
Coming up to it though, aren't they?
Yep. Okay, so that's kind of where that one sits.
It's kind of swampy down in there. I can't picture that being that much in there.
Well, it's got a canal that goes right through the middle of it too.
Yeah, there's a canal there. Oh yeah, over there.
And now let's talk about the other piece of property to the west of this one that you just highlighted in blue. No, down. Below Suebert's. Where Good Lane goes through it?
This piece?
Nope, to the right.
Where the road goes through it, one of the funky shape, one's got the cell tower on it.
Uh, Suebert's piece, this one?
Okay, now south of that. That's all ours there.
Ours.
Yeah.
Is there any restrictions on any of that property?
Yes.
So the only restriction on that 75 acres was we cannot mine that north triangle.
My opinion, just my opinion, not legal counsel.
Yeah.
This piece, I believe, is the northerly part of the southerly part that had, you know, and they go together. They were all transferred under, I believe, the same warranty deed. So you have to treat them the same. They're not really separate parcels. This is the northerly part of that and this is the southerly part.
Hmm.
Okay?
And it appears that the survey, I mean, there's, is there numerous parts? I mean, if you look at that one, there's just numerous lines to go through there.
Okay, so what happened out here, great name, is Ferris had his house up here and he sold to Suebert's. And Ferris had some covenants on it, restrictions, when he sold it to Suebert. And then Suebert sold it to the county and put more restrictions on it. And part of that agreement is all of the lines and road systems out here that said, Suebert had all of these little parcels down here, right here, all this, all these parcels. That if they ever built the road down here, Coskella, to their property and connected it and built it to a public road standard, then Valley County would maintain it as a public road. And then we could abandon this piece that goes up here to Charlie's because he would provide it access to this direction. At one time, see the road? At one time, they had a subdivision plot called Sugarloaf that they had proposed up here and then they didn't follow through on it.
So Cindy, do we have right of way bought from, to extend Coskella?
Yes. Not bought, it's...
Whatever it is.
It's part of their conveyance.
So we could build Coskella?
Yes, you can extend Coskella, I believe.
Put it down to Takiuchi or?
Yes.
So I see a, a right of way lines, right there at the easterly edge of all those properties. Is that right of way?
Yes.
Nope. Nope, it's just a real long narrow stretch above Wolf's Old House.
You're going to have to help me more than Wolf's Old House.
Sorry, been here too long.
Been here longer.
And Commissioners, we, the Clerk's Office provided you with the warranty deed on December 14th, as well as the covenants, the restricted covenants on the 14th as well. Want to refer to those?
We had sent you all this paperwork, but we'll tell, we'll have stories and then they go back and look at...
I just wanted to remind them that they have.
There's two deed restrictions in our packet for today.
Gotcha.
And then, Doug, who would have sent that? Was that you or was that Gabby on the...
I sent that on the 14th, but I don't know if it's the same material.
It should have been in their packet.
Okay. Sorry Cindy, I apologize. You should have looked at that first.
It should have been in your packet.
Let me click on that little piece that looks like a right of way.
It's probably just a gap.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Doug, those are in addition too, so.
Were they additional?
Yeah. That's...
So the lines are off a little bit?
There's just a gap in, in ownership.
Oh, okay.
What that looks like. This is the subdivision, ownership, and they probably didn't, the assessor will at some point fix that.
Okay.
All right, I see.
So this Coskella lane has the potential to be a public road as provided with all of these cross easements going through the county, this piece of the county property.
And so then we know that that bottom left-hand corner of this whole thing has other restrictions placed upon it because of road access easements.
A bunch of easements, there's Idaho, there's a whole list of Idaho power easements, water line easements.
Really, to the, the left of Good Lane is restricted property anyway. I don't need to even worry about that because there are documented easements on there.
I will, yes. Well, there's a little bit of property that you, it's steep though.
But as far as you know...
See, here are those easements that go down.
We could still develop that property for a gravel source if we don't build Coskella?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure all the way down, that's what I mean. Where our pit is right now, we're probably 300 foot elevation difference between like where the cell tower is and where the upper end of our pit is. So we started at the top, working our way down and north.
Well, Dobby proposed, the reason you started the pit over here kind of on the backside is to leave this as, as a buffer from Highway 55 and all the houses over here. Eventually, that will probably be wiped out. It was the buffer though.
Jeff, when I first became a Commissioner in 13, Gordon and Jerry, I think, were folks running the show at that time, they decided to sell a lot of this. You know why?
We're not landlords.
Because they didn't want to have to deal with the house.
We owned, we owned dang near everything we just clicked on. We owned, we owned the, the only property we didn't own was Suebert's, McDonald's.
McDonald's held out, they wouldn't sell it to us.
There was only a couple of places in there, but for us to be able to get, to put the gravel pit in, we, 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 I don't know for sure, but it's like, you got to buy us out.
We, we even had Charlie's house.
We had Ferris Lynn's old house.
You know why they sold the cell phone site?
We didn't, that was always Suebert's.
Oh, that was always Suebert's, okay.
And Suebert's is just past Ferris Lynn's house, that's been there a long time. Um, yeah, we had all that and we had employees in the other McDonald's house. We had employees in the old Bra's house, employees in the chicken house.
Yeah, we had all these houses in here.
Every, oh, Wolf didn't sell either. We had the Red Barn. Yeah.
No, we had that one.
We didn't have Wolf's.
They had employee housing.
Oh, the Red Barn. Yeah, Wolf's is the next one to the south. Eugene Wolf Field.
They'll have employee housing up there. We still have a well and a septic and power up there.
His kid owns it now, I think.
So, yeah, so all that went away, um, in like 2000, when everything took it out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the gravel pit piece, and I believe the rest of that property, is subject to a whole bunch of things. And it's also subject to covenants that state that during the life of any of Suebert's, Suebert or his offspring or their offspring, 25 years after their deaths, so like third generation, you shall not sell in Valley County or in Valley County any of the same materials extracted from the property.
We could only use it on county roads, right?
Valley County highways.
So does that include a bike path that's in the county right of way?
It's not a county road.
It's, it's, it's a Valley County highway. In the definition of Valley County highway, we're on real property owned or maintained by Valley County. Oh, term Valley County highway
Gets from...
is limited to any public roadway within the county, which is owned or maintained by the county or a highway district that might subsequently be in it.
And we were talking about helping Dave out with the Sampson Trail, material from here, Gordon sent out a deal that said we can't do that.
That's not a roadway.
It's not a roadway.
It's in the right of way, but it's not in the roadway.
Public roadway.
So my question then to Jeff, is there somewhere else we could go, mine that material for projects like that?
So every one of our pits, including Gold Dust, say basically that same thing.
About Lake Fork.
Lake Fork, same way.
So is that...
I, I mean, we'd have to look it up. I'm not a legal person, Cindy's not. I mean, it, I'm, I'm just going off of what Gordon's told me in the last 20 years and Robinson and everybody else, that you cannot use that anywhere except for on our roads. Can't sell it, we can't donate it, we can't...
Right, but why wouldn't, I, I'm going to have to take the other side and see why wouldn't a pathway be part of your road system? It's a transportation corridor.
Is it maintained by the county?
That's an Oki question.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so we're going to just take both sides here.
Well, and that's where I'm coming from, is I want to make sure we're all, everybody knows what they're doing out there so we don't get in trouble, but also that we can develop what we think we can. If there's somewhere else we need to go on that site and pay somebody to come in and develop a gravel pit that we can use on a bicycle path, then I think we need to look at that.
It says it can't be state, divided home, municipality, or private individual or entity. So it doesn't exclude pathways.
Right, it, it could go either way.
I, you know, it's part of the transportation system. So I think that's an Oki thing and I think that you, you might go to the
You got gray area.
heirs of Suebert.
Gray area.
Go to the heirs of Suebert and do an addendum to the agreement. Do you think you want to do, use it for pathways? Or talk to Oki, I mean, I'm not legal.
Yeah, I think we, we need to talk to Oki about that and, and I'm sure he'll come to you for the information on it. But I think that's something that we need to develop because we want to do more pathways and we need the material to do it and we can't provide it, it's going to be too expensive.
I think these, these agreements were back before pathways even existed, so.
So, here's food for thought. The detached pathway on West Roseberry out by the...
That's what I was thinking about.
Pumpkin Patch, whatever.
Yep, mm-hmm.
We built that with that material out of good pit. We paved it, not part of the road.
We've already set a precedence.
The road right of way though.
It's in, well, we don't own it right of way through there.
Who maintains that?
Forest Service right of way, right?
Well, no, that's a, we have an easement through that little chunk right there.
Oh, that we're going to be getting here soon?
Yes. It'll be ours soon, but it's not ours right now.
But we've already violated the intent of Suebert's deal.
Did we?
No.
I don't think we did. I mean, they're multimodal.
It's a public roadway. It's a public roadway.
If it's in our right of way, we should be able to do whatever we want with that material. If we want to widen a corner, we should be able to do that.
Good excuse Neil. I wouldn't here, I don't know nothing about it. Wasn't me.
Jeff, you know, is that rocking that quarry qualify for asphalt? It's hard enough to do that. That is awesome.
It's been tested.
And you have a CUP, but we should look and make sure we're still up to date on that one.
That is awesome.
So, we've also talked about, not to preempt, NZ, maybe doing some sort of overlay here for industrial uses.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, what Oki should look at or legal counsel or something is would that be prohibited on the county property?
Well, we know we're prohibited as far as retailing the gravel, but that's the only restriction that I could see on, that you've told me today. We, we could do all kinds of stuff with that property. Theoretically, we could build employee housing on it if we wanted to, right?
Yeah, it was, it was meant so that we didn't affect Suebert's.
Suebert, we're not competing with that rock source. That was it. Now, can we do an industrial overlay on that area? Can we rent that ground out to some of the ones put in an asphalt batch plant? Those are the things that we need to, I think.
But if they were using that rock there, then it would have to go to a public road.
Yeah, they can't use our rocks or...
They also have the assignment of restricted covenants and a second parcel, which is 180 acres in size. So which one is that? We only have 80, was transferred. The deed to the, okay, so whereas the deed to the 40 acre parcel contained restrictive covenants which restricted the grantee's use of the property for excavation as well as for mining, smelting, and milling. So that's on a 40 acre site. The deed to the 120 acre parcel also contains restrictive covenants which restricts the grantee's use of the property for excavation as well as for mining, smelting, and milling.
Is that, which one are you looking at?
Uh...
Is that 271243?
It was... 271243, yeah. This was, um, so which piece is that that we're looking at?
Well, this was from, this is when Suebert bought it.
So, so his restrictions, did they carry in? Are they, are they like permanent restrictions so that we have to abide by his restrictions also?
Okay, so Suebert still owns this stuff down in here. And I remember some things where we had to go get some restrictions removed so we could have our gravel pit. Because somebody sold it to Suebert. Suebert had all these restrictions on it, you know, because he wanted to protect his house up there.
So it talks about that in this deed restriction. It was a plaintiff in a lawsuit styled, styled by Lynn McDonald and Howard Cosella.
I'll get there. I had to place the.
And I think Lynn's house was way north of all the pits, up on the.
Right to the south.
Lynn McDonald is.
Right off Takiuchi.
Right there. It's not hers anymore. They sold it a couple of years ago.
The issues of the lawsuit related to the extraction and crushing of materials on property neighboring the forty acre parcel and the hundred and twenty acre parcel. The lawsuit in part caused a signor to place the restrictive covenants on both parcels in the sale to Schubert. So they carried through onto the Schubert sale. I think legal needs to look at this and, you know, give us full clarity. I'm as confused right now as I was before, so I'm sorry.
It's confusing. That's why, that's why Cindy's leading us here.
I think Cindy, your idea of PNC wanting to do an industrial overlay is appropriate.
I agree.
And that's something that research should be done to accomplish.
Right, and I was trying to figure out exactly which piece this went to. Yeah. But this is talking about a forty acre parcel, a hundred and twenty acre parcel.
I thought we had some more property further north and east of this site.
No, no, we've always butted up against Bloxams and DF and.
Somehow, I think that there was, when we bought it from Schubert, some of those restrictions were released. That would be good to know. Oh, no, they, they went into my office when it wasn't my office and they closed the door and didn't include us in the conversation. That's kinda the. That stuck with you.
Locked out your own office.
I was standing outside the door going.
What north is there, Jeff?
North?
Yeah.
That gets down into Aldapi's and Casquilla's and.
See, that fifty-two Salt Lane I thought was Lynn's. No. Hey?
Roberts Ranch. Oki's house is right here. Yeah, this is, I think this is all Casquilla's and. Guess this is Casquilla's and Loomis's, yeah, okay.
What's that piece south of Floyd's? There. Same property too. See, that goes clear over to Casquilla Road.
Actually, that all backs up to the state piece, doesn't it?
No, no, we're farther north. This is all private ownership in here. Little farms here and there.
Moore's.
Start getting out of the flats or out into the flats.
So do we know David Aldapi, is that one of the Schubert's relatives?
No.
No. So. Had a gravel pit though.
He's a meat butcher.
So the next question for legal is, as these properties have turned over, where do the restrictions go? Because it's, it, the restrictions were specific to Schubert's offspring. On that piece that were restricted for ninety-nine years, that was, that was specific to Schubert's offspring. But the twenty-five years after the death of their third generation? But if they, if these abutting property owners are no longer Schubert's.
Does it say anything in there about selling it? If Schubert sells it, then these restrictions can be revisited?
But it talks specifically to who those, um, are in place to.
I mean, if Schubert sells everything up there and moves to Florida, are we still, would that be null and void? Are we still?
That's a, that's an Oki question because if it's on the deed, it goes with the deed.
Goes with the land. Covenants go with the land. They do, however, if it's specific to a certain person that you're protecting and that person is no longer there, then, you know, that's, that would be a good question to ask. I had sent these to Oki and I'm not sure if he's ready to weigh in on that. Where's the?
Well, I'm, I'm glad to learn that we've got a good pit and it's good rock and make pavement. And we're gonna be secure for a long, long time.
Long time. That's why the county bought that years ago.
What I'm hearing from contractors that Oki's pit's being related. See, there's Chris. This is Schubert. This is all that Schubert stuff. That's why legal counsel and then some surveyor, somebody, or cartographer that draws out all these calls. Creating a map, a GIS map of what could and could not be done and put information on it, on each one, that would be very helpful. Yeah, somebody that's gonna go read all of those meats and bounds. And the title companies would, might be willing to do that on our behalf. They've got escrow people that, that's what they do for a living.
There's your forty.
Forty right there. That's the forty, then probably the rest of it was the hundred and twenty.
Jeff, is that road, good road plowed now to the pit?
We plow up to the intersection where it goes into Charlie Gibson's house and our pit. We turn around at that little Y. Then Charlie plows up to his house. That's something else we need to talk about. I need to talk to Oki and you guys about one of these days. So when the county bought Ferris's house, both wells were dry. So me, being an excavator operator, we put a water line in from where the chicken house was.
We're sharing a well?
Yep.
There's a point of wa- water even in, in one of these too.
Is there? Wonder, oh, that might be what that's for then. Yeah, we've got a water line buried right along the side of our pit road that goes up to Gibson's house along with the power, so he's yeah.
So will you share the well with Charlie?
Yeah, we're not using the well, but it's the old chicken house well.
Is that the same well that we were talking about putting a house up there? But the honeybees pots are sitting on our property?
Never did figure out whose bees those were.
Supposed to say on the box.
Well, there's too many bees up there. I didn't go up.
I wasn't getting out either. Wanted to look at it, but I wasn't getting out either.
It's gotta be on the hive box itself.
Just like a trap then.
And a phone number.
It almost looked like there was a, uh, like an equipment shed or something up there too.
That's our equipment shed. We park, that's where we keep our two campers and we park other pieces of equipment there in the winter time.
So that is on.
That's ours.
Where's this? Now where's this shed?
It's on the.
Right, I'll go down the road.
It's up on the top of the hill.
Up. 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 Up.
On the weird.
Nope, down left. That's where the chicken house used to sit. And that's our equipment shed right there.
Okay, so that's our property?
Are all the boxes that
Yeah.
or bee boxes around there. But there is a well that's right there, almost where the.
Yep, the house used to, you can kinda see where the footprint of the house was, where that really green trees and stuff are in there.
We could put a house up there today. We could buy, matter of fact, we could probably, you know, put a couple of those tiny homes up there and have something.
Tiny homes up there.
There's, there's water there, but what I'm hearing is we're sharing that well with somebody now. So do we really have water up there or not?
How does that guy in the behind there, Jeff, get up to his house?
Just shut him off.
What did you just say? This is the towers. What went dry?
Well, so there's the.
Two wells up at Ferris Lynn's house, Charlie Gibson's property.
Okay.
There was two, we found two wellheads and neither one of them had water in them, so we were, we bought the Lynn's house and we put up the and we used to get the prison workers every summer for a month. We put them up there in that house and they maintenance around the house and it seemed like every year the road crew was up there shovel the roof off or
Well, that's where.
Fixing water breaks or.
Jack Charter's lived too.
Oh, Jack lived there, yes. That's, yeah, Charter's had it first. We rent, rented to him. That's why we had to get water up there.
And do Schubert still live on that? The piece that's directly to the right? There's still somebody that lives there? This isn't a house, this is the cell.
Yeah, out by Gibson's house, past Gibson's house is Schubert's.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Oh, no, it's a cell tower. That's all that is.
I wonder if he would be interested in selling that piece and cleaning up that, but. The cell tower?
Have a restricted.
They have, this piece here has rock on it.
Yeah, that's a storage facility for Schubert's.
Yeah. Look like there's rock on it. They have a CUP, you can kinda see that they've excavated through here.
It's perfectly flat. It's got a gravel base on it.
Hey, we're out of time. You guys, anything else you wanna know about this?
Not other than what we asked for legal to look at. I mean, I, I think in creating some kind of a GIS map would be very helpful for future use of what can and cannot be done here.
Thank you Cindy and Jeff both for updating us, cause even I didn't know all that.
That's all we know.
And it's enough.
I didn't even know we owned.
We'll have the discussion with our attorney and see how he feels about some of this.
I know that during some of the testimony that there was so much dynamite being used up there that it was reflecting like John west of Casquilla. John Dale.
John Dale, yeah.
Would be interesting to see what's in that CUP also, or if there even is a CUP on Olson's and the states, yeah. Pretty bad. I mean, the dust mitigation. I sent people to EPA, you know, go tell them about dust.
Olson's used to, it used to go Olson's, Boise Cascade. Olson's bought. Boise Cascade and.
Makes sense. Hard for owners, partners in that. And when the dust comes came, we called Mark and sold his share.
Kinda like Neil, I, I wasn't there, not me.
I don't think he was real happy with the dust.
Hey, this being the end of our morning session, I'm gonna adjourn and we'll see everyone back here one o'clock.